All right, so we will begin. We will ask Student Trustee Ingrid to lead us in our opening prayer, National Anthem, and Oath of Citizenship for this meeting, regular board meeting of Tuesday, January the 16th. And Ingrid isn't here. There she is, yes, there you are. I was looking over at your seat. Thank you, Ingrid.
In the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. This month, the post-monthly prayer intention is the evangelization of religious minorities in Asia. This month, the Holy Father asks us to pray that Christians and other religious minorities in Asian countries may be able to practice their faith in full freedom. Religious liberty is a hallmark of our American system. In Canada and the United States, such liberty is enshrined in law. It is protected legally, if not always in practice. The situation we enjoy here in the United States and in Canada is not the case universally. In places across Asia, as we sometimes see in our own societies, violations of religious freedoms by individuals, groups, and institutions are of great concern to all of humanity. The Second Vatican Council, in its Declaration on Religious Liberty, insisted that all people have the right to religious freedoms. This includes immunity from coercion on the parts of individuals, groups, or any other influence. No one is to be forced to act in a manner against his beliefs, in private or public, within reasonable limits. A Catholic vision of the right to religious freedom is grounded in the dignity of human person, that dignity being known through reason and revealed through Word of God. As it is enshrined in law, it is a civil right, but it is firstly a God-given right. This vision of humans persons made in the image of God, our Catholic anthropology, is one of the most important contributions Catholic and other believers can bring to public dialogue and discourse, to the debate in the public square. In this month's intention, the Holy Father asks us to pray for the freedom of those in Asia to exercise this fundamental freedom, one of which many of us here in Canada and the United States may take for granted. We are asked to reflect. Am I free to exercise my own religion as I see best? Do I restrict the rights of others to practice their religion in my personal, social, work-life? How do I bring the values of faith to my public and private discourse? And what are the differences between the two? For those deprived of their human needs and their human's right, that they may be given the dignity which God confers unto all of His people. For this, we pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
For all who are forgotten or thrown away, and especially for the poor, the sick, and the aged, that God might change our hearts and move us to love them as the image of Christ. We pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
For all who are lonely or afraid, for teenagers on the streets, old people in nursing homes, and prisoners with no one to visit them, for all whom the world has forgotten, for this, we pray to the... That Christ might lead us to them. For this, we pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
For all who are forgotten or cast off, that we may value each human life as a priceless gift from God. We pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
For those who are mentally disabled, that we might cherish the gifts God has given them in their lives and hear the voice of our loving God. We pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
As Jesus sought the quiet of the desert, teach us to pray. As Jesus watched the feet of His disciples, teach us to love. As Jesus promised paradise to the thief on the cross, teach us to hope. As Jesus called Peter to walk him across the water, teach us to believe. As the child Jesus sat among the elders at the temple, teach us to seek answers. As Jesus in the garden opened His mind and heart to God's will, teach us to listen. As Jesus reflected on the laws and the prophets, teach us to learn. As Jesus used parables to reveal the mysteries of the kingdom, teach us to teach. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. I affirm that I will be faithful in my true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, Queen of Canada, her heirs and successors, and that I will faithfully observe the laws of Canada and fulfill my duties as a Canadian citizen.
Thank you very much, Ingrid. Beautifully done. Thank you. We're good? Okay. And I would ask Vice Chair Marai to read the motion adopted in camera, please.
We have one retirement notice that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept with regret the retirement of Paula A. Dawson, Director of Education and Secretary to the Board, effective August 31st, 2018.
Thank you. Number two, the remainder, the information received in camera, we do have to go back to in camera, so there's nothing further that we have at this time, I'm afraid. Number two, approval of the agenda. Any additions to the agenda? All right, can we have a mover, please, to approve the agenda? Trustee Intomasi, seconded by Trustee Voe. Any questions at all? None? Good. Declaration of Conflict of Interest? All in favor? Did I not say that? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Maybe I missed it. Thank you. I'm glad you're there. Declarations of Conflict of Interest? We don't have any, I don't believe? Okay. No presentations, no delegations? Approval of the minutes under 6.1, the minutes of December the 19th, 2017, regular board meeting. Mover, please. Trustee Quinn, seconded by Vice Chair Marai. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. Business arising from the previous meeting, there were just a couple of items there, I believe, on page 10. All right, no questions to that? Okay. Action items, we have 8.1, Upholding the Sanctity of Life Through Donations to Charities and Nonprofits. Trustee Carabella's Notice of Motion. You have the floor.
Thank you. So I'll read the motion first. So whereas on January 19th, 2014, Pope Francis wrote to the participants of the March for Life in France, "Let's say yes to life and no to death; and whereas donations are ways of asserting our yes and our no for or against institutions which support or violate the upholding of the sanctity of life from conception to natural death, be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board, because it is a Catholic institution, will not provide or facilitate any financial donations to any charities or nonprofits that publicly support either directly or indirectly abortion, contraception, sterilization, euthanasia, or embryonic stem cell research. For the purposes of this motion, public support for the issues listed above, abortion, contraception, etc., is not support when privately expressed, but is support when publicly expressed on a website, in press material, or found in some other public area. Be it further resolved, the Director of Education will provide a list of all charities and nonprofits which benefit from financial donations from the Board by the Board meeting of February 20th, 2018." Do we...
Speak further to that?
Sure, yeah. But do we start that, or do we have to put it on the table? A secondary? Okay, fine.
Doesn't matter. You can put it on the table. You're the mover, so a secondary, please. Trustee Trites, thank you. Okay, and then you have the floor.
Okay. Thank you. So we discussed this in the last session, and this motion is very important. It is so important that we don't fund things that we say fundamentally that we are against. This motion ensures and would put in place a policy to make sure that no financial donations are facilitated through HCDSB that would go to any organizations that may directly or indirectly publicly support agencies that support abortion, contraception, sterilization, euthanasia, and embryonic stem cell research. These issues, we know, are contrary to the Catholic faith, and as a Catholic institution, we need to make sure that we're not sending $1 to them or helping them raise $1. A list of charities and nonprofits is needed to show where the money is going now and where it will go in the future. We need a policy with these specific criteria, and we need a list for transparency and accountability. Our current policy on fundraising, V-04, gives no specific criteria or guidelines for funds raised other than, quote, "Fundraising should reflect the values and expectations of the school community, including those of parents, students, staff, and school board trustees." In the administrative procedure, V-1-59, it states, "The purposes for which funds are collected must be consistent with the Board's mission and values." This criteria needs to be more specific, especially in today's confused moral climate, and we know that administrative procedures can be changed without being brought to the Board table. This motion defines and gives criteria required to those charities and nonprofits that the HCDSB is involved with. According to Halton Alive, over 1,700 abortions happen in Halton each year. When you do the math, that means there's five babies that are killed on average by abortion each day in the region of Halton. So during the four weeks of Advent, 115 babies died by abortion. Three days after Christmas, on the Feast of the Holy Innocents, we commemorate the baby boys slaughtered by decree of the government of the day. And now, another 19 days after that feast of the Holy Innocents, it's tonight, and that's another 95 babies that have died by abortion. For a total of 200 babies that have died by abortion in Halton since the beginning of Advent, this is a horrific amount. May their souls rest in peace. One baby is too many, and $1 is too much. I'm asking you to vote in favor of this motion for life. I believe that everything we do to protect and promote life has the final effect through grace of saving the life of a baby.
Any comments? Any questions? It is on the table. We have a mover and a secondary. Anyone wish to make any comments? Trustee Voe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, to the Director, I guess. Schools, in their generated school funds, provide on their website the list of charities they support already. Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chair. As I expressed before, when this motion was discussed at another meeting, I appreciate the spirit of the motion, but we do have a vision and mission statement. We have governance of our Catholic-based practices, and I just believe that this would be a very laborious and unnecessary practice that our senior staff would have to undertake in monitoring every activity of every fundraiser throughout the system. And I really don't see how they could do it, and notwithstanding, if the motion passes, I just think it's unrealistic to think that there can be a comprehensive list that is stagnant, that the list is ever-changing, and for that reason, I don't see that I can support this motion. Thank you.
Vice Chair Marai?
Agree with Trustee Intomasi's points. I think the most problematic area is found in some other public area. Like, I don't know if we're gonna have people searching and looking at websites and Facebook of comments of all these staff, of all these charities on a constant basis, but it doesn't seem like a good use of resources. That said, I think the spirit is good, and I think, you know, if you want to add recommended groups or organizations that we'd like to promote in potentially, like, the policy itself to put out to the schools, these are some very... These are organizations routed in our Catholic values. I think that's, you know, more than a fair way to go about it, but at this point, I think it's kind of a make-work project for staff.
Thank you. Trustee Quinn?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'd hate to think that we would want our school staff to be involved in a make-work project aimed at saving human life, and that we think it would be onerous on our staff to make sure that we're not funding groups that are involved in promoting extermination of life. So frankly, I'd be terribly embarrassed if our Board does not support this motion wholeheartedly, and I will be doing so.
Thank you. And Trustee Danko, and then Trustee Carabella, and then I have something to say. Okay, let me just get everyone down here. So that is Anthony, Helena, and Susan. Okay, go ahead.
Chair Rabenda, we know that even the bus operators are audited for safety in order to prevent fatalities. Why can't we audit our charities to prevent a practice that we don't believe in?
Thank you. That's the end? Okay, thank you. Trustee Carabella?
I was gonna say that because our principals do prepare an annual report, that it wouldn't be such an onerous job to put it all together. I've seen other lists get generated pretty... Quite fast. Our staff is good. And again, like, it's for a good purpose, to save a life, to be firm, be clear what our commitment to life is. There's something else I was thinking, and anyways, it might come to me. Okay.
Trustee Trites?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Just bringing up on Trustee Carabella's points about lists in the school, this isn't onerous, and I'd like to make the distinction from the last time we saw a motion like this or similar. There was a lot of talk about lists, and we really sort of drilled it down because we sort of mixed up services. And this isn't that. If you're actually at the school level, I'm thinking more secondary, when we give in the community, and some of them are very well-known, it's not a big deal. And to keep it up, it's maybe four or five, you look at assumption, where they put their Crusaders funds, it's the same ones, March for Life, they do Can Drives, they do, what do you call it? Saint Vincent de Paul. It's really not that onerous. We also do lists on our speakers, and we vet them. It's not a big deal at all. It's easily doable, and for an extremely good cause.
Thank you. And I now have passed the gavel to Vice Chair Marai, as I would like to speak to this too. I guess where I'm having a little difficulty with it is that many of our charities are established by personal schools, individual schools, I should say, and they're based on a need or a recognition that they want to give within that school. Maybe a parent has been ill with a certain illness, or a child has been battling a certain illness, and so they want to support that charity. Very often, medical charities are charities that work in the Third World, and I wouldn't want to see that taken away from them. With regard to the list of charities, I think that the previous time we had discussed something similar to this, the Director indicated, and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Director, the Director indicated that it would take five staff members a number of days. Was that correct?
Was if we had to look at all of our purchasing, everything that we purchase in our Board.
Okay. So that would be, so the list of charities and nonprofits that we have done in the past, if we adopt this, if that's what the Board wishes, then that's fine, but I don't see what we need to do with the charities that we've worked with in the past. If we worked with different charities under different rules, and now we've changed the rules, then we work under the new rules. But I don't see any need to have a list of what we've been doing in the past at all. It was done legally and according to Board policy and administrative decisions, so I don't see the relevance of that apart from another work list. So I guess that's probably all I have to say at the moment. Thank you. Anyone else wish to give comments? Madam Director?
Through you, Madam Chair. I just have a question for Trustee Carabella. Could you help me understand what indirect support means, if not publicly expressed?
Indirect support, if not pub... Indirect support would be you're giving to a donation to a charity or nonprofit, and then indirectly they take that and give it to another agency because they might have a list of so many agencies that they sponsor, that they donate. So if one of those agencies has expressed somewhere that they do provide references to abortion or do embryonic stem cell research, then that would be a reason not to fund, help fund, that agency, that charity.
Through you, Madam Chair. That's a little more work involved, because that would be more digging down into the subsidiaries of somewhat another group that isn't publicly expressed.
Well, you know, there's other ways to do it, not just one person who has to drill it down. We've seen our current government is asking for an attestation. There's ways you can ask for the charity or the nonprofit you're working with to just be direct and say, are you involved in any of these... Any of these issues?
Again, I would look back on the conversations we already... Basically, we don't have to make this any more complicated as it is. A lot of our charitable money stays in the communities. Would be a good opportunity to seek them out. It doesn't have to be complicated. We don't have to get caught off by five days of work or indirectly. I'm thinking of Chalice out on the East Coast, upfront, good administration costs, and that they're low. It's a great opportunity. It does not have to be time-intensive nor complicated.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. To Trustee Carabella, I know this isn't my question, it was Director Dawson's, but I just want you to clarify that indirect support, because it just sounded... I know it's a logistical thing, but it just sounded like one agency was giving to another agency.
I don't understand what the difficulty is.
I just don't know what indirect giving is.
So you have $100, and you gave it to Charity A or Nonprofit A, so they have $100, and now they might give 50 to this charity or nonprofit, or... So it's just seeing where that $100 ends up, that it doesn't end up somewhere else than it was intended to be.
Okay, so it's not indirect, it's just direct?
Perhaps.
Okay.
Thank you. Perhaps to help Trustee Carabella and to answer Trustee Michael's question. A donation to the YMCA in the Toronto region is an indirect support of Planned Parenthood because they are a direct funder, and they list the charities that they fund through the YMCA, and Planned Parenthood, for example, an abortion provider, would be indirectly funded through the YMCA in Toronto. So that's what an indirect funding would be, and maybe something like a me-too-we organization. They have an indirect charity, poverty charity, and if they provided abortion services as part of their, then we would not want donations raised by our Catholic School Board, in the spirit of our laws and in the mission of our Board, not to be funding groups that support abortion and euthanasia. We wouldn't want to fund a hospice that conducted euthanasia. So that's what I think we mean by indirect funding.
Thank you. Vice Chair Marai?
Yeah. Do we have a sense of how many organizations this would affect? At the Board? This is to... This is Trustee... This is you.
Well, I hope not, you know, because I'm hoping that we don't do that, but it's to make sure, and it's to have it in writing, and it's for the future, and it's to make sure that we're not involved. Things get done without realizing. This gives a guideline, and it still lets parents be involved, and of course, at the principal, the school level, everyone can still be involved. It's just a vetting, a criteria that's going to be written down and available.
Madam Chair, and the point of this, it gets to the root of it, which is... Which is, these organizations are pretty complex now, and, you know, the whole indirecting, these are large organizations that have multiple subsidiaries now below them. They're not simplistic organizations that exist. And I think before we... And maybe there are parts of an organization that are doing very good work, that's aligned completely with what we want to do. Maybe the local one is aligned perfectly with what we'd like to do, and the national isn't, or the international isn't, or what happens if in one other country, that local isn't doing what this local is doing? There's a lot of questions here. Why don't we answer those questions first and say, what organizations are we actually active with? And then take it from there versus surprise to our schools and to a bunch of school councils and school committees and say, nope, you're cut off, you can't fundraise for this organization anymore. Let's stop the surprise.
Through you, Madam Chair. So is Vice Chair Marai suggesting that we get a list before we... That we get a list before we have the vote on the motion? That staff can give us a list of the charities that we are contributing to? I mean, we can do it that way as well, right?
Would we not then have to just send a note out to the principals and saying, what charities have you or are you supporting? And because they support one this year, they may support something else next year. Is that what we can do?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think that's what the action is on Trustee Carabella's motion. You just want a list to begin with, and then, I don't know what you wanted to look after. You mentioned a policy, you mentioned admin procedures, but when I read the action on the resolution, really, you're looking for a list.
I'm looking for more than a list. A list is integral to it, but it's a written-down criteria for our donations, to make sure that no donations are going to any agencies that fund abortion, all those issues against life. I think it's very clear. If not clear enough, that's why we're debating it. So I think it needs to be clear and voted on.
Okay. I've got something I want to say then, Christina and Ingrid. When the schools decide they want to support, let's say, a medical charity because of something that's happened at the school, that money isn't ours as such, it's the money belonging to the parents of that school. It's not money that's come out of our Board pocket, because the government doesn't give us any little budget line that says, your donations are here. So it really isn't ours. It belongs to the parents who have donated it to that school for whatever the cause is. So if we make sure, and I'm sure we do, that our principals know the nature of the funds and the institutions, then that shouldn't be an issue. I'm gonna take Christina, and then Ingrid, and then Trustee Danko. Okay?
Sorry, just to be clear, so are you saying that if the organization... So let's say we raise money for, like, water wells in Africa. Let's just say hypothetically that's what we're doing. But the organization does contribute to Planned Parenthood, so would we not be able to contribute to the water well in Africa because it has an affiliation with that, or even though the money is not affecting it? So is that... Would we completely just take out that organization because they do contribute to Planned Parenthood, but not necessarily that money is going to Planned Parenthood?
I think you're saying that it is going to Planned Parenthood.
No, it's going to fund a well. So let's say, like, there's an initiative, and all the money goes to the initiative, but the organization itself does have a Planned Parenthood branch. Are we still not allowed to consider that organization?
I would say we should not, and we should look for a wonderful other opportunity to supply money to a well, a water well in Africa or in another country. Yep.
Thank you for the clarification.
Trustee Ingrid?
So what I just wanted to add is that I feel like this is an issue that's gonna be... to be personal to a lot of students because we're, especially students that I know, that I interact with a lot, like student council and students that are very dedicated to their school community in raising funds and in being involved. And I know we do all sorts of things like barbecues, we do like little penny drives or things to raise money very last minute in our school communities and to limit that and limit the organizations necessarily, I know it's going to be a personal issue to students and a lot of students, I feel like will want their voice heard as to where their money is going, to what causes they want to, all this stuff that we do at school and all the things that we raise money for. So what I wanted to add is that, why don't we get student council feedback? I know that's something that we did this year for the student trustee policy, it came from the ministry, but just hearing what their opinions would be on this issue would be helpful in my opinion. So that's what I wanted to say.
Chair Abenda, I just want to refer back to a statement you made about whose money it is. I understand it, the school communities are donating to the school and then the money is under the purview of the school itself, so and so it's not the individual's money any longer. They may have contributed it, they're not, I'm assuming they're not getting a tax receipt for it.
It's not a bunch of money.
Right. But nevertheless, we're responsible for auditing that money. We have plenty of audits about school-generated funds and we have to apply accounting principles and the rules to governing that money.
We're talking about accounting principles, we're talking about decisions, moral decisions.
Right, right. Well, we're talking about moral decisions in our schools every day and that's why we exist, right? That's why we exist. That's our mission statement. So let's be consistent with that. I'm actually shocked to think that we would split hairs on trying to say that, oh, because, you know, our principals are not worth enough to make the effort to ensure or to encourage people or discourage people from supporting practices that we just don't believe in. I mean, these are non-negotiable aspects of our faith.
I don't think the fact is an issue, but I believe that it's been out on the record.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, I think for the benefit of everyone around the table. This is from the catechism of the Catholic Church, "Respect for the Dignity of Persons", and it refers to scandal. And I think that's what we're talking about here. We're scandalizing ourselves by somehow turning our blind eye to groups that we fund that promote abortion and euthanasia. "Respect for the soul of others. Scandal is an attitude or behavior which leads another to do evil. The person who gives scandal becomes his neighbor's tempter. He damages virtue and integrity. He may even draw his brother into spiritual death. Scandal is a grave offense if by deed or omission another is deliberately led into a grave offense." So I'll ask you all to consider what we're doing here. We're scandalizing ourselves as Roman Catholics against the catechism of the church if we, being presented with the opportunity to prevent our school boards from funding abortion and euthanasia, that we are scandalizing ourselves. Thank you.
I do have some closing remarks and I also to talk about the voice of the unborn and that that child that can live can then have a voice and at their student council when they're alive and being educated and having a chance. So this policy is direct and clear and would make sure that as a Catholic institution, we put our money where our mouth is. When we say we uphold Catholic values, then we should be a hundred percent sure about where our money is going. It's a policy and a list. It's that simple. I invite you to vote in favor of this motion and to agree with Pope Francis as he said to the March for Life participants in France, "Say yes to life and no to death."
I'm in favor.
I'm opposed.
Opposed?
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
Opposed.
In favor?
Opposed.
In favor?
At eight point two, proposed 2018 facility renewal project, Superintendent Merrick.
Thank you and through you, Madam Chair. This is as presented at the December nineteenth meeting of the board, our facility renewal projects for the summer of 2018. So we had five schools slated for renewal projects next summer, so Bishop Reading and Milton, Canadian Martyrs in Burlington, Notre Dame Secondary in Burlington, Saint Mark's in Burlington and Saint Michael's School in Oakville. So we have two resolutions for consideration tonight. The first, to proceed with the projects as listed in the report and the second is to approve the cost of the projects and expense the funds.
All right. So we will go to page, let me see, where am I? Page twelve on that. Any questions, any comments? Nope. All right, so go to the resolution, which I have lost. Page fourteen, it's, okay. All right, so we're going to do it split. "Result of the Halton Catholic District School Board authorized staff to proceed with the proposed 2018 facility renewal projects. A mover please. Trustee Ian Tomasi, seconded by Trustee Quinn. There are no comments, questions on that? All in favor? Thank you, it's unanimous." The second one, "Result that the Halton Catholic District School Board authorized staff to expense funds from available capital funding and the capital reserve for the proposed 2018 facility renewal projects and that the expenditures will not exceed ten million four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. A mover please. Trustee Danko, seconded by Trustee Rowe. Any questions to that? All in favor? Two, three, four, five. No, hang on a second. All in favor? Okay, then we've got it unanimously? Yes, okay. Thank you. All right, so that's done. Eight point three, Milton number eight Ford Catholic Elementary School, the School Boundary Review Committee Final Report and Recommendations, Superintendent Soprano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I present this action report regarding the Milton number eight Ford Catholic Elementary School Final Report and Recommendation to you tonight. As part of this action report, you have before you the entire list of the project milestones that now have all been completed. The Milton number eight Ford Catholic Elementary School Boundary Review seeks to establish, as you know, school boundaries for the new Milton number eight Ford Catholic Elementary School prior to its opening this fall, September 2018. You have the full staff report before you at the December nineteenth board meeting and the staff report is very similar to this action report in the details and information and maps. Just a reminder that this new school is the first of an anticipated four new schools that will be built in the Milton-Boyn Secondary Plan over the next ten years. So because of this anticipated future growth of schools and to mitigate the number of moves over the years, part of this, part of the recommendations is to staff, sorry, sought to designate study areas as holding development areas for future elementary schools in the South Milton area. And you have that as part of your action report as reflected in the third resolution. You'll also note that the School Boundary Review Committee is recommending option two as approved, as the approved new school boundary. A reminder that the Community Information Night, staff presented option one as the preferred school boundary. And although most of the feedback at that evening and the online feedback was positive and supportive of the recommendation, there were comments expressing some concerns about the multiple movements of the rural students in the area that are presently at Saint Benedict. With the option, proposed option one, these students would have experienced three different moves since starting their school careers at early victory. So considering this, staff made the change and the impact on Saint Benedict and they've made the change to the map that you see as option two, which keeps our rural students at Saint Benedict until such time Milton number eight Catholic Elementary School will be opened. And you can find that in your appendix. So to conclude, you have before you the recommended resolutions recommended by the School Boundary Review Committee and supported by board staff. Before you, again, I'd like to publicly thank the parents from the Saint Benedict and Saint Peter School Communities who sat in our School Boundary Review Committee. I or any member of that committee that are here tonight from our senior staff would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions pertaining to that item? No questions? All right. So we will, we will take the vote on it and I will read the motions. All right. Be it resolved that the boundaries presented in option two be implemented for- can you read this, please, because I'm losing my voice? Thank you. Resolve that the boundaries presented in option two be implemented for the 2018-19 school year for Milton number eight Ford, Saint Benedict and Saint Peter Catholic Elementary Schools whereby these changes shall have the effect of altering existing attendance areas by one, redirecting patch V fifty-two, V fifty-seven, V fifty-one, V fifty, V fifty-nine and V fifty-six from Saint Benedict Catholic Elementary School to Milton number eight Ford Catholic Elementary School. Number two, redirecting patch V fifty-eight from Saint Peter Catholic Elementary School to Milton number eight Ford Catholic Elementary School. Resolve that the students attending in grade seven at Saint Benedict Catholic Elementary School in the seventeen eighteen school year be provided the option to be grandfathered without transportation for the 2018-19 school year and resolve that the holding areas be designated in principle for Milton number nine, Milton number ten and Milton number eleven Catholic Elementary Schools to notify the community that they may be subject to further school, future school boundary reviews for these new schools. Thank you. Can I have a mover, please? Trustee Rowe, seconded by Trustee Ian Tomasi. Any questions pertaining to that? No, all right, we'll take the vote. Trustee Quinn?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Anna Maria?
In favor.
Trustee Rowe?
In favor.
Trustee Christina?
In favor.
Trustee Danko?
In favor.
Vice Chair Murray?
In favor.
Trustee Trites?
In favor.
Trustee Michael?
In favor.
Trustee Ingrid?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Thank you. Okay, so now we have staff reports, nine point one, Saint Mark Catholic Elementary School Edition Sketch Plan Design and for a new budget. Superintendent Merrick?
And through you, we present the sketch plan design for the Saint Mark School Edition. So this project was necessitated by the lifespan of the porta pack that we had installed at Saint, at Saint Mark's School in Burlington. So we had eleven classroom porta pack there. Porta packs are obviously temporary structures, they have finite lifespans, so we needed a permanent solution. For the school, it was an eleven classroom porta pack, only five rooms of the porta pack were occupied, so the entire second floor was vacant and the surplus space. So we, back in January of 2017, requested a addition to the school so we could remove the porta pack and add a, an appropriate size addition based on our future enrollments at Saint Mark's School. That rightsizing project was granted, the funding request was granted by the ministry in June of 2017 and the addition included a school portion, so a five classroom addition in addition to one special education suite or room. It included a childcare addition, so a three-room childcare space, an infant, a toddler and a preschool room and an early-on center. Early-on is the new name for the O E Y C, so the Ontario Early Years Centers are now called early-on centers, they've rebranded that, so you see that in the report. So all three of those components are part of the project that was granted funding in June of 2017. Going into the summer, we went through all the approvals and removed the porta pack structure in preparation for the upcoming construction project. The board approved the budget and the approval to proceed with the project back in September, so we're presenting the sketch plans to you tonight. And we're also combining this, we just approved the facility renewal projects on the remainder of the school for Saint Mark's and back in December, we also approved a natural place base for Saint Mark's. So lots of, lots of good new investment going into the school. And we hope to, you know, pair up all these three projects so that the whole school kind of looks refreshed and renewed and is contiguous. So looking at the proposed site plan, the new addition ironically is housed in roughly the same place as the porta pack, however, I assure you that it will not look the same as the old porta pack. So the orange section you see on the, on the site plan there is the, was where the new addition was proposed to be housed. It attaches onto the back of the school and it's a two-story addition. Kind of the unique thing you can't see about the Saint Mark's site, it's up the parking lot on the, it's on the west side of the lot, is actually a story higher than the school portion, so it's actually, it's raised up about ten feet. So the idea with this addition is that the ground floor will be at the school level and be contiguous to the school, so the whole school is on, on the first story, if you will. Stacked on the second floor is the childcare and the early-on center and they walk out onto the, onto the parking lot level. So both of, it's kind of like a walkout basement style, if you will, where the childcare on the second floor actually walks out onto the parking lot level and the school down below is contiguous with the rest of the school that's already a story below. So you see how it attaches to the school and we have a childcare outdoor place base for the, for the childcare space as well. Looking at the first floor design, we had five classrooms, so the classrooms you see there in orange as well as the special education suite, so similar to what we've seen with our new builds, designing a special education suite with kind of those, the therapy rooms, sensory rooms, an office or a meeting space as well as a safety room attached to that. We have a unit, we have new washrooms or smaller washrooms, it's not a, it's not a large addition, but we do have boys and girls washrooms added on to the, to the new addition as well as a universal washroom for those that have accessibility constraints. Some storage space added on as well, a teacher workroom added and then finally some storage at the back here as well and we also have a resource room here sandwiched between two classrooms, again employing the collapsible walls so that they can expand those two classrooms into a contiguous space if they desire to, if not, they can close it up and use it as a, maybe a one-on-one teaching space or a project space for a group in the class. So that's a school addition on the, on the ground floor. Above that, we have the childcare space, so the childcare space is in green, so an infant, a toddler's in a preschool room along with all the ministry requirements for the office and the kitchen and the sleeping rooms and washrooms outfitted there as well. The early-on center is the blue space that you see. The ministry is still working on guidelines for what they want to see in those spaces, so we left it blank for now. We anticipate that there will be a washroom and an office space in there as well as a storage space, but for the most part, it will be very open concept, separated more by furniture and low shelving, more like a learning commons and not separated by walls in that space. The construction budget, which we approved back in September, it's just under three point seven million. Based on the, on the proposed design, we think we have enough funds to complete that. So there's how it breaks down, the majority of it's spent in construction, obviously, and the professional fees are the next largest bucket there. We do have funding in right now for new furniture for that portion of the building as well, And then we have a resolution that we'll bring forward to the next board meeting for action to proceed with the sketch plan as designed, as you see in your, in your package. So I'd be happy to take any questions you might have on that.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions on Saint Mark's? Trustee Quinn?
It looks terrific, but I think, again, I want to ask a question about the selection of the architects. It looks like the drawings are already done, you've just gone through what you plan to build based on someone else's design that we haven't approved you soliciting. So I know you have a number of shortlisted architects that are already pre-approved, but it seems that this is already fed to complete.
We did go through a approval process, or an RFP process to pick an architect, so they all brought in their own designs. We give, do an evaluation based on, it's two-thirds based on their, on their designs and then one-third based on cost. And then we, so staff select the architect. This is more to, I guess, show you the designs and approval to proceed going forward before we issue it for tender.
How many architects, uh?
We have four on our list. We have four on our list. Three of them submitted packages.
No other questions? All right, so, uh, we will be coming back at the next meeting to, uh, discuss that further in terms of an action item. Ryan, will you be ready by then? Okay. All right, so now we move on to nine point two, Proposed Assumption Renewal Work Phase One.
Yes, thank you. And through you, Madam Chair. Uh, we present the assumption renewal works phase one. Um, so just a little background on, uh, the assumption secondary school building. Uh, it opened back in nineteen eighty, uh, before I was born and before full, full funding for Catholic education. Um, so it, it was built at a time where there was, uh, different programming needs in the buildings. Um, and it's gone through a, a number of additions, uh, since then. Uh, so nineteen ninety-two, we had, had a, a building addition to it, uh, in two thousand and one, and another major addition. Uh, and then in two thousand and nine, we added the sports field and the running track in the, in the back as well. Uh, the current facility condition index for assumption is fifteen point six percent and facility condition is a ratio of the, um, it's the assessed renewal needs over the next five years divided by the asset replacement value of the building. So if the, uh, I guess the cost of the building or the, the value of the building, if you will. Um, so the higher the number, uh, the more renewal work that the building needs, the lower the number, the better condition the building is currently in. The provincial average, uh, is twenty-nine percent for all, all facilities, all five thousand schools across the province, the average is twenty-nine percent. Uh, Holden Catholic Historically has kept their buildings in very good condition, um, so we're significantly above that. We've always been in the top five in terms of, uh, total facility condition index across the province. Um, so our facilities are in great shape, um, but, uh, comparing assumption to the rest of our secondary schools, uh, there's some, some discrepancies. So, uh, the average of our other eight secondary schools is four point eight percent, um, in comparison to fifteen point six at, uh, at assumption. And if we remove Notre Dame and Bishop Reading, which both have, uh, large renewal projects already on the go, uh, for the summer, uh, the remaining six, uh, schools of ours, uh, secondary schools, uh, have an average FCI of one point four percent. So, uh, granted that we are very blessed to have a, a, a great fleet of, uh, secondary schools, uh, in our, in our board, um, the, there are discrepancies between where assumption is at in terms of facility condition, uh, as well as programming, um, versus the rest of our secondary schools. And, um, facility condition only looks at major building components and then items that are critical to, uh, to school operations. So that would be things like lockers or gym flooring. It doesn't look at things like aesthetics or specialty programs. So if you didn't have an auto shop or you didn't have a dance room or you didn't have a, appropriately, uh, uh, you know, science labs, it doesn't look at those. It only looks at, um, whether your HVAC or your lockers are in, in good shape. So assumption is still missing some of those, uh, those specialty spaces, um, and, and even the special spaces it does have, it lacks behind our, uh, the rest of our secondary schools. So given that, we came up with, uh, an extensive list of, uh, proposed renewal works that are, you know, basically anything, everything we could do to assumption to get it up to par with the rest of our facilities. Uh, so you have the full list there and in your report. HVAC and LED lighting, uh, are two of the big ticket items on there as far as costs. Um, the cafeteria and server room are undersized compared to other schools. Uh, a lot of the specialty rooms either lacking in space or lacking in, uh, amenities in them, so science labs, uh, learning commons, special education rooms, commercial kitchen, uh, weight room and fitness room are kind of some areas that we noticed that have, uh, lack versus other secondary schools. Uh, and then as well as some teacher workrooms, uh, lacking in space, outdoor storage space, uh, even indoor storage space is lacking as well. Uh, exterior landscaping and parking lot, um, could use some, some refurbishment, um, so those are the, the list of items that we, um, created to try and bring assumption up to the par with the rest of our secondary schools. So looking at the, uh, kind of the, the full gamut of the, of the renewal works, uh, to complete a project like this would take three to five years. Um, it's a lot of work and a lot of sequencing and staging of projects, uh, as well as various approvals required, both from yourselves, uh, on the Board of Trustees, uh, from the ministry, uh, and from municipal, uh, local authorities as well. The total cost to complete all of that would be roughly seventeen point five million. Um, it is a, a large amount of money, um, to invest in one facility, but it is one of the facilities we recognize that has one of the highest needs, uh, throughout our board. Uh, unfortunately, the board at this time does not have sufficient funds to, to fund the entire scope of the project. Uh, however, we do expect additional capital funds, uh, to come in in the future. Uh, so at this time, we're recommending that we proceed, uh, with a reduced scope to get some of these, especially the long lead time items, uh, on the go, uh, so we can execute them this summer. Uh, the two items that we're recommending we proceed with is the addition of air conditioning to the gymnasium, specifically the, the double gym, um, the, the, you know, main hub of the, of the, of the school for, uh, for both for sporting events and for, and for large gatherings, uh, as well as a refresh of the science labs on, on the second floor, uh, which are of, uh, in need of, uh, repair and, and new millwork and updating. Uh, the total cost for those two items would be roughly one point one million dollars. Uh, so recommending we proceed with this reduced scope for one point one million. Uh, the work would be completed in September, or in the summer of 2018, uh, and we'll continue planning with, uh, for the other requirements, uh, as the, uh, as the, uh, uh, renewal dollars and capital dollars allow, uh, and as we, um, complete the rest of the full scope. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have at this time.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I'm not sure who answers this. Perhaps, uh, Fred, what is the current capacity of assumption and what is the utilization and what are we predicted to be in the future? Does that, these reports usually come with that kind of information?
Sure. Uh, through you, Madam Chair. In regards to enrollment, like we were discussing back in December when we were reviewing, uh, recent retention rates, especially at the elementary panel, as well as the number of students that we've been acquiring from other boards, uh, assumption has actually been performing very, very well, uh, also in light of, uh, the additional programs, the EP program that was introduced last year, if I recall. Um, well, it's been a couple of years. Anyways, long story short, right now utilization is near a hundred percent and it's anticipated to continue to be within that range over the next fifteen years, assuming that trends continue the way they are right now.
And currently the rate of capacity, it's around, I want to say nine fifty-five is the number right now. Uh, we're very close to that, um, even in terms of scheduling, uh, classes into the, uh, into the rooms that we have available. I know the principals had difficulty in this year, uh, fitting enough classes. Um, you don't want to teach math in an auto class or in, in tech shop class, so, uh, you want to make sure that you're fitting the right classes into the right spaces. So even this year we had difficulty scheduling and had conversations about potentially adding portables there.
There's no portables there now.
There's no portables there right now, but we're very close to a hundred percent utilization, so.
Superintendent Overholt?
Through you, Madam Chair. Just to put it in context, probably, uh, last year we were anticipating, uh, approximately, um, just under eight eighty, eight ninety, and we ended up, uh, population of, of, over nine forty. Um, so a, a number of factors with our, our principals certainly, uh, spearheading, uh, and promoting the school in the area, uh, certainly have received and continue to get our own students, but I think we're getting other students as well in the, the south end. So, uh, it is a good news story that we're continuing to grow, uh, with assumption.
Um, so what I've noticed is that, um, we've cut, obviously, a lot of items off of the renewable requirements list as of right now what we're planning to do. And I just, um, I was wondering, what are the plans? Um, so you talked about getting funding in the future, but what are the plans? How is this going to carry out long-term to, with the other renovations and getting the full list on the, the requirement list?
So, so we do have other funds, uh, that we expect to come in, in the next year. Uh, so as those funds become available, uh, we'll continue picking projects off this list and, and executing them. So, uh, I know when we met with the parent council, uh, AC to the gym and science labs are two things that were very, very high on their list to, to see done early on. Um, knowing that, uh, we wanted to expedite those. Um, they also have very long lead time items, so epoxy countertops in science labs take about at least ten weeks, and that's if you can get in to order them right away, uh, as well as, uh, an HVAC unit for a, a double gymnasium, an off-the-shelf unit. So a long lead time for an item like that. So those are things we wanted to get in as soon as possible, uh, and if we do have those funds become available, even between now and the end of the year, we can be doing more things, uh, at, through subsequent approvals of the board at later times, so.
Uh, trustee Quinn, then trustee Anne Tomasi.
Thank you. So, so and hearing the, the good news about the increase in enrollment without these, uh, these, these good, good or potential requirements, uh, we could get by with these, these, uh, these two proposals for the, uh, the one point one million dollars in total and then see where it, it leads with, uh, with, with access or, or with, uh, interest in, in attending. Because I, I, I don't know that, uh, the, the weight room is the reason that we're attracting students or if, uh, landscaping of outdoor areas are the things that are, are leading us to, 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 to continue to increase attendance. And if it's more along programming that we might look at, that we use this, these, these funds for programming initiatives rather than, uh, than, than, than physical initiatives.
Our programming is always our priority. Uh, Superintendent Overholt is going to answer that, then we'll go to trustee Anne Tomasi.
Through you, Madam Chair. Um, certainly understand some of your, your questions, uh, trustee Quinn. With, in terms of weight room, it is a, it is programming. Uh, it is something that the school utilizes. At this point in time, um, because of the facility that is at assumption, they have to go to Good Life, um, to be able to utilize the, enough equipment to continue on with some of their programs. So, um, it is a need that does affect the programming at the school.
Um, thank you. And trustee Anne Tomasi will be our last question, then we have to move on.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank staff again, uh, for the presentation also at assumption, and I believe the assumption parents were very happy to see the list and certainly the AC is going to be very welcome. Um, to, to respond also to trustee Quinn's comment about the weight room, you'll have to forgive me, trustee Quinn, because right now I'm about ready to jump over there and strangle you. I have been, I have been listening to parents since my daughter was in the school about lack of facility, about lack of equity with the schools. The weight room is a two-by-four. It's unfair for the students there to have to trek half an hour over to Good Life and then a half hour back, leaving them about twenty minutes in, in Good Life itself. And they're going over in winter and it is not a fun journey. Um, the school is sadly lacking in a lot of areas and these things are just something to bring it up to a little bit of a par by comparison. Um, certainly nowhere near a brand-new school that the rest of our system enjoys. So, uh, forgive me if I get a little emotional about this. I, I know there's a couple of people sitting in the audience here who are from assumption and the reason they're here is because they have to go back to their council and tell them what we're deciding here. And God forbid after they've come here and begged and pleaded and sent letters and delegated that we're going to do nothing again.
Thank you. Trustee Anne Tomasi, we're moving along, uh, to the next item. I think, uh, Superintendent Merrick, are you finished? Thank you very much for all your work and please do thank your department, and we know you're very busy. Uh, so now we'll move on to information items. Ten point one, student trustee update. Uh, trustee Ingrid.
Thank you very much. So on, um, Tuesday, January ninth, uh, we held our first Senate meeting of the year where we discussed, um, the ongoing assistance that our senators are providing to their feeder schools in terms of the See the Problem, Be the Solution, um, uh, campaign that we're running, um, making sure that the senators are aware of the different ways they can assist their feeder schools and increase their confidence in, um, submitting, uh, for this, uh, project and making sure that we have a hundred percent participation from all our feeder schools in regard to submissions. Uh, we discussed spiritware and we also discussed about how the International Students Initiative and how, uh, some schools may be getting an influx of international students second semester. Uh, we also spent the majority of the meeting talking about the leadership conference that we're going to have coming up and how, um, senators, we feel that the senators' input is going to be very, uh, critical in the planning process. So we've taken time to make sure that the senators have input on all aspects of the conference, such as speakers, breakout sessions, how the scheduling of the day is, because after all it is a leadership conference that's planned by the students for the students. So we want to make sure we take in full consideration what they want to see from the event. And from February fifteenth to the eighteenth, Christina, Anna Maria and I will be attending the Ontario Student Trustee Association Board Council Conferences in Ottawa, so we're very excited for that. Uh, under the pillar of achieving, uh, Notre Dame had DECA provincials, uh, and their senior, uh, basketball team won G Hack. Uh, at assumption, um, our Model UN team is actually going to Yale this week, so that's very exciting and we're really proud of them. Um, they've done a lot of fundraising, so, um, they really deserve it. Um, at Bishop Reading, they also went to DECA provincials. Um, Jean Vanier had a breast cancer, breast cancer basketball game. And at Corpus Christi, they are doing their school play, which is We Will Rock You. Uh, a lot of schools are taking on exam distressors now as it is a very stressful period for students. So I know our school's offering hot chocolate and, um, coloring sessions to, uh, ease the, ease the stress of exams. Um, Christ the King is also doing exams distressors and so is Holy Trinity. Uh, SGA also went to, uh, DECA provincials and they are actually, uh, their, uh, Shizm program at their schools has managed to get students co-op programs at Sick Kids in Toronto. So that is a really incredible opportunity. And at Loyola Cross Country made it top of them. I'll pass it on. Um, just to add on to Ingrid, so Osta Ego has actually just released their student platform, which the Executive Council and, um, the General Assembly have been working really, really hard on. So we did release that on January tenth and it was really interesting because we actually had the opportunity to do the release at Queens Park. And we had a lot of media coverage, which was really great to see as well. Um, there was actually a segment on TBO last night with, on the agenda with Steve Paken. Our, um, our president of the association, Dasha, was there and she had time to speak about mental wellness and how it's, um, it needs to be more focused on in our education system. So just some information on the student platform. It's been titled A Turning Point for Education and it has been built on three fundamental pillars that students have deemed necessary for success. The pillars are student well-being, twenty-first century learning and equitable access to opportunity. Um, so from these three main pillars, there have been sixteen policy recommendations that we hope will improve Ontario's education system.